Conservation Commission inland wetlands agency meeting for April fifth. It's seven ten. And it's a big role. I'm here with Chris Thomas, Jerry Ruck, you're here. Rick Boucher is here from Webex. Brian McCann is here, Jay Fain is here, Kade Mahoney is here, Peter Coode is here, Ed Edson here. And so we have four. Kinda. Alright, one, two, three, four, five, six. And guys wanna put the coin? Who wants to be?
Kate.
Okay.
You're Kate, and you're gonna be appointing Kate as a poll member for tonight's meeting. It's uh, Stephanie is not here. And two draft meeting minutes. Uh, any corrections and issues with the minutes? If not, then most of the motion seconded by Kate, all in favor, okay. There we'll get to a public hearings. First one, continue WP dash twenty-two dash three twenty-two William Kenny Associates LLC. Two seven one seven North Street, map one sixty-five, parcel twenty-nine. Replace existing residential driveway crossing within a regulated area. A decision may be made if the hearing is completed or the hearing may be continued. The original thirty-five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ended on March eighth, twenty-two. I think that might change to twenty twenty-three. The eight twenty-eight day time extension provided by the applicants continue the public hearing to April fifth of twenty twenty-three. A further limited seven day time extension may be provided by the applicants or further public hearing continuation to May fourth, twenty twenty-three is possible. Potential continuation date of May third, twenty twenty-three. The hearing is concluded, the decision shall be made within thirty-five days of the closing of the hearing and the staff recommends approval with permission. Okay. Hello? We're, we're, yeah, sure. Are you comfortable?
I think everyone just needs to speak up because Rick keeps being on the hearing.
Rick, can you hear us? Rick, Rick? You should just have the blue line on it. Jared's having this wrong issue this time.
He was in here.
It's, yeah, it's, it must be running through the projector.
He's in the projector. Rick?
So Jeff from Fair TV just said he can hear.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, then, okay, we're off. So I, I will say Rick Boucher is here on the screen, but we're having technical difficulties. So for purposes of vote and for this particular one, if we fix that, I'm also gonna appoint Ted with this one here now, okay?
Okay.
That's fine. Very good. So please.
Good evening, ma'am. Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates. Here in, well, professional, like, scientist, soil scientist. I'm here this evening on behalf of the owners of twenty-seven seventeen North Street. It's an existing residential property, approximately five acres. With a, it's a rare lot, a relatively long driveway that comes into the property and it crosses a small street. Uh, there's several, uh, two plastic pipes, two eighteen inch diameter plastic pipes that allow for water flow under the driveway. They have, they've been failing and they're crushed. So the owners, we submitted an application where we remove those pipes and with our initial application, the proposal was to do a swamp bridge where foundations would be, through excavation and put in foundations and reestablish the water course beneath that bridge. Um, that was a very good application. Uh, good for the water course. Uh, we left here, we were before you, maybe in January, I don't know, February or January. Um, there was a question about hydraulic flow. Oh, yeah, pipes and then also make an opening, change the opening, are you allowing more water to come through that might affect someone's distribution? So the town engineer had a question about that and agency members also expressed some concern about that, wanted to learn more about that. So the project engineer, the company, in evaluation of the water flow under existing and proposed conditions. While we were waiting for that to happen, the property owner started getting some estimates for the cost. And their contractor suggested a different approach to this. Rather than excavating and pouring concrete footings on each side and then putting they recast open water holes. So proposal is slightly modified, it's substantially the same, I mean, reset the drawings they did what from second that showed that, um, over rather than the bridge. Uh, so the amount of opening is, is, is smaller than what the bridge would have been, but there are some benefits. The contractor had pointed out, uh, during construction, this can be accomplished much quicker. And, uh, which is good for the stream and it's also, uh, there's a safety factor of getting emergency vehicles up to the house if something were to happen. The quicker that this driveway can get reestablished, the better. Uh, so, and it's substantially, uh, less costly and there's less excavation. It's a very tight location there with conservation, you've done some property ones that where do you put the material, like, or material and so forth. So the proposal before you, the same thing is for a box over, reestablishing a channel within that box over. And the project engineer evaluated the box over as well and finds that there's no impact with, with regard to hydraulic conditions, flow of water. And you please make sure any questions that you might have.
I have a couple of questions and a comment. Um, one of the advances of the, um, previous, um, board table established a low, low channel underneath. I think you can still do that, but you're not showing that. So I'd like to have a low flow channel incorporated to design so that when, you know, you get streams, or I mentioned, any animals that are using streams to travel, they would be able to do that. Otherwise, the water spreads out under that whole box over, it's not going to go for that to happen. And so the second comment I have is more of a procedural comment. Obviously presented us with a feasible and prudent alternative at the last meeting. Um, by statute, we are, um, bound to approve the feasible and prudent alternative that has the least effect until what, until water courses. Um, so I'd like to have some kind of discussion for the record. Um, if you've done it kind of verbally, uh, I think we'd be prudent to have a paragraph at the end of the file. That, that, you know, I personally think that this is, it's okay and I, and I appreciate the both the process aspect of it and also the fact that, um, it can be done probably two days or this way, maybe two months.
Right.
But I think we should have that just, uh, in a file and so that it's every question to say why we didn't put the other alternative.
The property owners, please, please. Find those proposals.
That's, that, you know, otherwise I, I was kind of surprised when they came in with the other proposals, because they've done a lot of these and it's, it's, it's technically difficult. So I, I personally don't.
Any other questions or comments, the commissioners? Okay. And you said you're okay with, uh, updated or set on flow channels and providing some, some narrative regarding feasible improvement. Okay? Motion. Approve the public hearing, so any second? Ted, Ted's got a second, okay. All in favor of close the public hearing? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Number two, Scotton and Fairfield inland agency, propose revisions to the inland wetlands and water course regulations of the town of Fairfield to amend the fee schedule and update regulations. So, um, a decision may be made if the public hearing is completed, but the hearing may be seen, we're gonna take five day public hearing timeframe, the hearing ends on May tenth. Yeah, that's all for PECO, May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, a sixty-five day time extension may be provided so further public hearing continuation relied fourteen, twenty twenty-three is possible. And a potential continuation date is May third, twenty twenty-three, the hearing is completed, the decision shall be made in thirty-five days propose of the hearing. Staff recommends continuing public hearing pending approval from Connecticut. Potential effective date of revised regulation from July one, beginning twenty twenty-three. Okay. Um, who wanna have a discussion on it tonight or you wanna just do it once? Next, here. Any?
I'd like to, you know, I'd be curious, get it out there tonight.
Okay.
We're ready. Um, I think the ideas, get this draft, all our comments to the D so we can adopt the makes sense. Have a, uh, tonight.
Well, I'll start with thanking the commissioners for doing, uh, when the heavy lifting and getting the homework. It, it was a lot of work and it was, uh, well done. Uh, we also had the SLR look at it and they were happy with it as well. Um, so I but I think it will be fun and it's great, great for us the way it is. Um, I did notice, we talked about it briefly, that there, there, the way this is set up now, there's a fee schedule that's separate, it's on its own on the back but it just happens to not be in our package here, but it is on the cloud, you can see it there. Um, I particularly like that because, you know, you don't have to change the whole time, you're just gonna change the fee schedule. Yeah. Tim, anything present like that?
Um, no, it's, uh, I think, um, we've been pushing for this, uh, over the last year and it's kind of evolved. Uh, and adapted, I think, all for better reasons. I got through last, uh, last summer when it initially began, uh, we'd be at certain things like the, um, the third party peer review, uh, paid by the applicant. So I think this, like the time, it's, um, through that evolution. Uh, with SLR's, uh, um, review and recommendations and in the sub, working with the subcommittee, um, I think we have a pretty good document that, uh, in line, things make things a little more simple uh, for applicants and be cost effective and in, in line with, uh, with surrounding towns. Um, and hopefully, you know, definitely more fair to applicants, you know, going from a natural resource based fee structure and schedule to, uh, a use based fee structure and scheduling what the agency is charged with regulating. So, um, I think we have a good, a good product to, uh, put forward, um, put down in the future. And my recommendation to you was to, to, um, make them effective once approved for July first because of the mandate that this will do.
Okay. So I had the question that it's gonna be, be an interesting situation for the next April meeting. We gonna do anything with the fee retroactively or are we gonna start on that July first? People are gonna say, well, I'm not gonna, this is kind of crazy, interesting question, so if we can imagine that. Uh, so, you know, it depends on.
How about if we do this where if you can advise them what the fee would be July one, they can, they wanna move forward with an application now, maybe they can do a fee waiver request that matches them.
I think there's gonna be some cases where the old fee schedule would be less expensive and somewhere new.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just, I don't know, like, the upper case and stuff. Ask for the backwards.
If they come back, we'll be covered under that.
Okay. I did kind of talk about.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, deeps review.
Yep.
Uh, you know, another one here. Might just work out anyway. Yeah, but it, I mean, it, I guess it doesn't have to be coincide with the fiscal year either. Well, it's just a suggestion to.
We can't adopt the regulations till deep review.
Transition, right, so.
Um, I just, I just wanted to raise that as a potential, you know, for base, you know, some people are gonna say, yes, no.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up.
That would also give us time because now we're gonna have to internally in town hall change the way we receive money for permits, the deal with the finance department with all the forms and the documents that show we put in money for permits, you know, those are gonna have to be rewritten and the way finance department takes our money and puts it in certain boxes, we'll have to change too, so.
You don't.
There's other things in the behind the scenes that happen.
We have, we have, there hasn't been a, you know, the way that we've checked to see what the revenue is, is go back a year of all the applications and apply all fee schedule. We haven't thought that, but I, I think that we assume that we're gonna might have it.
I think, yeah, so last two fiscal year.
So what's the difference?
Um, it, it, it depends, the, uh, uh, for the twenty-one fiscal year, uh, there was a twenty-six point two percent decrease in our, um, revenue. Um, given these, you know, had the fees been in place with those activities. Uh, for twenty-two fiscal year, uh, we were up about three percent. So depending on, you know, what people.
What's the reason for?
That it would be.
Hold on, I just realized, this, if we have it open, is this, do you want us to open the public hearing or we just have a discussion?
Or does that mean?
This is a special. Okay.
Well, you know, we tried, in theory, it's supposed to be a self-funding situation, the agency getting not money, income from the, um, applications, it's self-funding. I think generally, that's what we tried to do, but, you know, we saw there was some real inequities. I don't know, you know, this previous application was twenty-one thousand dollars, change of public for a driveway. Wasn't really based on any activity, it was based on, you know, how much, what name acreage you owned and I think that's that should be something that's celebrated, not penalized. Uh, so I, I didn't think this, if we schedule the way it was written, it was equitable and I think the, uh, way it is right now it's based on activities, I think it's equitable and I think it's, as Tim said, it seems to be a
Your work, our theme is also, I correct that you're gonna get more applications, there won't be any impetus to if the process? Well.
No, no, it's, no, it has nothing to do with the application itself. I mean, I think this becomes, it's, it's a better, it's been better written document, it's more consistent with all, every other, uh, municipality in the state as SLR pointed out in their application and it's become a fee schedule that actually, I, you know, I've been doing this a long time, I couldn't figure out the way that it had to be like a genius, you know, two parts of this and one part of that and take it off this menu and put it together, double it three times and you would add with a number.
Then anyone can say, this is what.
That's what it is, you know, it should be, it should be user friendly. Yeah, this is, you know, you wanna tear up, fill the house, it's five thousand dollars, okay? They said.
And I think also just combined a hundred feet of, of the water, I think just all of those things, like making it easier, you know, and then also I love the eight days. I think that's gonna be big for us too.
I think generally it's, it's a, it's a much improved, you know, and, uh, document both for the agency, for the applicants, for the staff. I think you guys agree.
Guys, talk about, um, the schedule for violations. Over one point, there's a kind of a backside discussion about.
I don't recall exactly we ended up with double or triple. Yeah.
Because the fees are lower, maybe that won't stand though, which is important. Just wanna make, I'm just curious, that you are thinking about that.
You know, in my experience as a professional, it's not the fees for the, uh, for the violations that really deter people because they could say, well, you know, I'll pay seven thousand dollars, it's worth it. You know, if I get away with it, it's the fiscal estimation and of course that really is.
Also too, you know, fees are so high and they're cost prohibitive, then they're gonna try and skate.
That's what I think.
Yeah, definitely, create the fee, I mean, but a tendency possible.
Okay. Well, open. Just should open it and then continue it.
Yeah.
Articulation of motion to open. Okay. Second. Eric's second. But this is the public hearing for the town of Fairfield, inland wetlands, provisions and proposed divisions, the inland wetlands and water course regulations of the town of Fairfield amend the fee schedule and update regulations. Is anybody here in the public, um, that would like to make any comments, um, either in favor or opposed to this? Yeah, okay, nobody's there, nobody's here, some people here, but they're not here for this or anything. Okay. Um, so.
It dropped out.
Yeah, I think he couldn't hear about that.
I, I don't think, oh, he just said, it's just not working.
It's not working, that's fine, and that's still on, so we're okay, we have the forum. But then it's, you know, technical difficulties, they get, you know? Um, alright, so we will, uh, continue the public hearing, keep it open. Um, and it's really, uh, for the purposes of Connecticut, D E P, D E H D to do what it has to do and then they'll come back to us. Okay?
Right. Yeah, we'll thank you all for your.
Yes, right.
There is, thank you. Really good.
Okay.
Just needs to be done. I hear everyone agrees, we're here and in town hall, but some of the way it's set up has some outrageous aspects that we all know. Time, time to change that.
Yeah. Alright, about five, application to the seat. Number one, WP dash twenty-three dash O twenty-three. O'Malley, forty-seven Quaker Lane, map one twenty-eight, parcel three fourteen, construct three foot timber retaining wall and add, uh, two hundred and thirty-five cubic yards of build to level yard within a regular area. Um, application type? Public hearing official received, no.
Period ends four nineteen twenty-three.
Um, last day of the public hearing, our decision is June ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, third meeting prior to June seventh, twenty twenty-three. There's a fee waiver request and the staff with the matching application pending legal notice and departmental review.
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, this is, uh, it's supposedly pure violations, it's not purely an application to responsible violation, so number one, I'd like to have this a public hearing on this. I hope I need to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so first thing, I'll make a motion that this be subject to a public hearing. But it's connected to an application.
Okay, and Adrian, second. Um, okay.
And then, I don't know if I, you know, I, I could editorialize probably a bit better way to the public hearing.
Well, you gotta see, we're gonna have a public hearing first, get what else.
We're gonna discuss. Maybe we'll discuss. Yeah, discuss.
Yeah, right now, discussion, yeah, so we gotta get this stuff, what, on the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I thought that, you know, this is a violation, I don't, I don't think that anybody should be rewarded for having a violation um, in, in by allowing the, the activity remain personally unless it's proven that there is no impact to wetlands and water courses. Where we already know that activity occurred within a designated wetland area and also within a designated flood, flood plain area. Those are all impacts that, uh, have to be mitigated.
So we discussed in the scope of work, we discussed the.
I think we discussed, I do, this is a significant activity, we asked for a motion about it.
Okay. Right, I, I don't, I don't recall that it was a significant issue. I, I, I know that work was done there, but I don't recall it being a significant impact on the wetlands and, uh, on the water courses. So I, I'm confused on which part is significant.
Well, I think anytime you fill, fill in a wetland and a water course, that's significant. And I think it's up to us during the public hearing to determine whether that's gonna have an adverse impact or not, but certainly within a scope of what our regulations say, um, working within a wetland or whatever water courses, it's a significant activity by definition.
Well, they're, they're not all significant.
Not all significant, that's outside, so the ones that aren't significant, the ones that occur in the upland review area, this occurred in a wetland.
Well, no, I don't recall that that being definitive, because that was the issue, right? With, uh, the woman said, I forget her name was, Alexa or.
Denver.
Denver. And, and they're, they had, it might not have been, it wa, you know, so I don't know if it's significant or not and there was, I think I saw a map that was, it was a little bit further out, there wasn't so much impact on that property, it was the wetland was a little further away and the issue was that there was a water table issue.
Oh, it's in a flood plain.
A flood plain, that's.
Right, which is, which is again, and also our map has, this is a map wetland. We, they filed a map amendment, we denied it, so at this point, it's currently a map wetland.
Well, yeah, but we also, I, you know, there's a lot of times that the maps that the towns have might not be always up to date, so if, you know, now, now their position might be, well, you know, it's not in a wetland anymore. It's in an upland review area by the time.
And that's what the public person, uh, really the purpose of the public hearing, so they can have, explain those, make those arguments. At this point, we have to determine, it's, it's our app.
Why wouldn't they be able to determine that by giving us documentation, a public hearing with this, you know, we have the information, we can rule, you know, rule however we wanna, you know, make our.
Because, because our regulations, this is anytime you do the work in a wetland, I don't, I can't recall any time that we've allowed work for a wetland or water course to have a, uh, a public hearing. That's always back to this. I, I'd rather err on the, on the side of watch and rather, um, you know, they can come in here and do whatever and make any argument they want, but I think we procedurally just
They have, they've come here multiple times, it just, we voted them down, so I.
Well, I don't think that's significant, but we voted them down and that means maybe we made a determination, we made findings and I think that we need to be consistent with that.
Ted, do you remember what the conference was?
It was, uh, what it passed up.
Oh, when they support the map, I remember, you were.
Yeah, it was a lot of, it, it's real house. Mr. Fane, um, pointed out that on our town maps that, uh, one corner piece is mapped as wetlands. Um, the applicant's soil scientist, uh, claimed that, uh, that it was not based on her, um, analysis prior to the filling. But that's my concern, she did delineate wetlands off-site on one of the properties that eight hundred dollars, which is in the packet. Um, but it was, it was, uh, kind of, there was, if you look at historic areas and go down three steps, there was like a something garden area that was trimmed out by a block. Um, and that was, that's what was filled. Uh, the debate was, was going back to last year, was the original recommendation to was whether exploring that excavated, below that excavation layer, uh, the bottom of the, the filtering layer, um, had any, um, turbial soil to meet the definition on wetland by statute. Um, that wasn't performed. Yes, you know, pot, essentially, mixed materials, uh, defined. Uh, but like, as I said, their, the map is wetlands right now, that was denied in the last program. Uh, my opinion is that we still have to enforce what the map says at this point.
Okay.
They haven't proven otherwise during that previous round that, um, that there were not wetlands sort of by definition.
Wasn't she here and Dickie Klein was at a town center, but she was going on a. About.
So, yeah. So in terms of what a significant activity is.
We just like procedurally, isn't it? We here, like, we upheld the order, procedurally, we upheld the order. Right? And so now there needs to be some kind of pursuant to that order, there needs to be some kind of litigation. Right?
The, the, we, we require them to. The, we, we require them to file a permit for.
I mean, according to our regulations, well, some type of mitigation, so their mitigation, their effort is to come back and ask for exactly what they asked for the first time.
Well, they didn't.
They did. I mean, I don't, that, that, that just, I mean, that, that just, that just.
So they're trying a little bit.
Said they didn't have permission the first time.
Right, and that was, that was your second point.
I don't want to think we would overturn our own order.
If we.
The order was for, that was for a map, corrective action.
Yeah. Not, so it was for corrective action after a map. But that, and again, and I wasn't gonna get into that, but I guess you should get into it.
I would ask for the, you know, that, that as part of their proposal, they have to give us a mediation plan, what remove it, and then way, move away that against the.
Believe you have to, I don't think they have to.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I.
We already ruled on that.
Yeah, they have to give us a, a, a. Yeah, and the order is what Tim is saying, they have to give us a plan to mitigate the, the impact, which we need to remove and restore. That's, that's the law.
They have to, I don't know, I don't understand why there's a discussion. Unless we reconsider our order.
I think that would be.
On the measure. On, on, on the corrective action.
On the corrective action.
Again, so I, again, I'm, and I can read through what the significant activity is in section two point one three four, I believe this is significant activity. We should have a public hearing, as part of the public hearing process, we should require them to submit a plan for the restoration of the area, then we can weigh one against the other, make a decision.
And now you feel bad for the homeowner and that she got bad counsel. You know, and I think that that, you know, if she had a soil scientist that came up there, she should have known what needed to happen with the town of Fairfield, and she didn't file the correct.
She actually, she knew there was an activity that required a permitting, and, and, you know, she might have reports against her.
Contractor.
Against her contractor for, for, but that's not our problem.
Right, I'm just saying, I think, I mean, I think the reason why it's kind of dragged down is that we feel that, I mean, you do feel for the, the homeowner who made this decision not to follow the proper channel, that she had actually a soil scientist on site prior to doing her work.
So I, I, my motion stands for anything significant activity.
That's in the discussion, I think, so, yeah. I'm gonna, Ted, one more, one second, I think they should come back and do us a plan. Damage has been done, determining what damage is and how to fix it.
Stand like the procedural posture though, isn't, wouldn't it be that you would, the next step would be, you would initially analyze some sort of mitigation plan? We upheld the order, an existing violation, wouldn't the next step that you would analyze some sort of mitigation plan? We're allowing, instead, we're not doing that, we're allowing them to come back in and legalize the exact thing that we upheld the order on.
This is a mitigation problem, we're not saying what we did.
Plus a fee waiver.
But the mitigation was just saying, what we did is okay.
Defense is overruled.
Yeah, everything's up. Yeah.
Understood, but they're asking, they're asking legalized. This would rubber, this would stamp that thing that we upheld the order on, unless I'm wrong.
No, I would, that's, that's. Incentually, I, you know.
I mean, I don't think, never mind, I don't think that we could hear, and we.
Why can't?
Because the next step is a mitigation plan, I mean, if we review that plan just preliminarily and staff, and like determine it's not a mitigation plan at all.
Yep, if they take that all down, and then they do a soil test after that and comes back with, there's no wetlands. What happens then? Because that's the thing, we're not sure if there's.
No record, it doesn't matter, so.
But then why can't they do that without?
Because what happened was, I think the wall in the back is about four inch or something, and.
And then I think they can't get.
Yeah. And one of the things, I'm just in the middle of my discussion today, so let me finish my own things, and then you discuss, you know.
Exactly.
No, not, yeah, so, so one of the options I remember is, somebody said, try to go on a neighbor's lot, dig in sideways to figure it out. That's, you know, that would be the only way, so if they were to have a public hearing, then somebody would have, tell them that that's what you need to do against.
But we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, we, we don't, and it's not as, there's a map on the town that says it's a wetlands in that back corner. I, I've been in front of other towns where that map has been corrected, and I, I know that they should have done what they did, but I'm not sure that. I, we've been, I've been to other parts of the town while I've been on this committee, I've seen some terrible things, don't believe, with the wetlands. I don't see this, because there's other homes around it that are not, it's not a meadow, it's not a wetland that I recognize as a full-on wetland, and, you know, being hyper-technical to me is an issue, that's all I, I have.
Yeah, I'm arguing that you're wrong. Right, I'm not arguing against your, but I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm interning, I argue procedure.
Right.
Procedurally, I just don't, I don't think that you can do this.
Well, procedure.
I don't disagree with you, I just think we need to do something before that.
And I agree with that, but procedurally, we can't even have any discussion, because we're predisposing and predisiding the application, you don't have the facts in front of you in terms of whether there, there was an impact, and if you were to say that you can leave it there without the facts, it's absolutely, is, is totally.
No, they need to provide us facts, I don't know if we need a full public hearing, that's all I'm saying.
So I, I think we do regarding our regulations, what a significant activity, and realizing this is a violation of our law, so I, I, you know, it's, it seems to me, the fact though, that we need to set a record, and the best way to set a record is with a public hearing, and then we, we should have a discussion, and Chris is, Brian's discussion, whether I feel that they should have given us a restoration plan, they can give us another plan, any plan they want addition to that, but then we, our order required a restoration plan, we, we should see one, then we should be able to evaluate between the two of them, based on the facts of, of whether there was impact or no impact. But we don't have that information, so we can't make a, the.
I'm not arguing with the information, I believe what you just said is, is correct, they should give us multiple options, whatever, but I don't, I just, well, don't see the.
I, I think, yeah, I think part of it.
Was there harm in having a public hearing, or are you concerned about the fee that would pass through?
Yeah, it's just, it's more, you know, and I don't wanna waiver at all, but I don't wanna have a hearing. Just have them pay and give us information that we might have to look at.
Public hearing.
This application is, is set as a corrective action, but there's no corrective action over there. So we thought we'd done that this is petition, so they give the.
The answer's no.
Again, come, come back with a fact. Further comments, questions on how to, uh, public hearing?
Well, completely have become.
Just a little side note, the reason why she doesn't wanna pay the fees was because she's on the. Which is either contractor, engineer, consulting.
Yeah, these, this is a lot of the, and it was expensive.
I mean, our fee is at least a problem.
I mean, I'm, I just think it's premature, I didn't think.
I'm accepting it at all.
Can't we determine on staff level that it's just not a mitigation plan at all? Like, my question is not, does anybody think that it is, right?
No.
If they do, then, okay, so nobody thinks it is, so. And that's the next step.
Definitely, yeah.
So I think she would need to come in here, like, why couldn't she dig a test bit, get an excavator, figure this bit, figure out that there are no wetland soils down here?
Is that, I've, I've, since I've been here, is there, do we have to accept it?
Just a second. But that's the, that's, that's the.
I think. I, I, I think. You accept it, and then.
Yeah, oh, the.
With conditions that can get denied or, or change of conditions.
Accepting with conditions, and the condition being.
Accept it and schedule a public hearing for June and not give them enough time.
Maybe that helps all of us on the procedural part, on the, the site, significant, to do to have a public hearing. Yeah, can we figure out?
I'm trying to figure it out.
I'm gonna sit in the office.
I, if it's recording, there's a beeping thing here, so we're just, that's, that we can't figure it out.
Brad, can you dig it out?
I mean, if the public can't talk, then we don't really need the public, neighbors' public, public meeting would be fine, where we have.
But we still have that, and the applicant would come in front of us, it's, it's not a public hearing. But that's what a public hearing is, that's when you get the notice to, to everybody that's gotta come in.
Well, the neighbor should be notified, you know.
What if she, I mean, who knows, maybe she shows up with a, a, a letter from, never saying there's no issue here.
If I've never seen wetlands there.
Yeah, like, yeah, okay, that's great.
But she felt it, we just, like, yeah, that's fine.
You know, so.
I feel for a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I'm sorry, are we voting now for in favor of a public hearing?
As well.
But that'll all, it'll, it'll, things sort of.
I need to talk to them about what.
We, again, we and I are modifying these conditions to your acceptance.
Yeah.
Right, so we have to accept, we have conditions.
Have one, except in it, last tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
So we just ask.
So are you gonna schedule the public hearings, or is that, I don't know.
Yeah, what are we doing about vacation? June or July?
July.
Okay, so. It might, yeah, have them come in for, for May.
For May.
And then we can explain what we're talking about, you're gonna give us, you're gonna talk to the applicant to.
Why are we stop wall work?
Yeah. It's done.
Yeah, it's installed.
Sarah, do they vote?
Yes, unanimous, okay, we're public hearing for May thirty.
Um, and, well, let's do this, do you wanna pick up the fee waiver now as well? Okay, that, that's.
Who's second in that?
Everybody here.
Pick one.
With that, I didn't see on this side, was that unanimous on the fee waiver?
Yeah, it doesn't.
Okay, for now, yeah. Way of lose the.
And that's unanimous?
Yes. Okay. Five, application for receipt number two, W P dash twenty-three dash O twenty-four, shipper fifty-three close on Hill Lane, master, particle three five six, wetland mitigation planings within regular area. Application type seek significant or non-significant public hearing petition received no as a three twenty-nine point three. Petition period ends four nineteen point three. Is the public hearing on a public interest, plastic public hearing or decision two nine twenty-three, last regular meeting card with seven point twenty-three. That recommends tabling application pending legal notice and departmental review. Okay.
But this is an application for corrective action?
This one?
This is for corrective action? Pause and hold on.
Are you aware of any, yes, the application is for corrective action?
We do a, a show pause right here?
Yeah, this, this is a violation.
A violation.
See, we have, we have, you have.
I didn't send an order.
I mean, we can't, we shouldn't accept this until we have the order, right?
But it says, are you, it's part of the notice of violation, have said as a.
Yes. Yeah.
This was open for the correct. It says vegetation removal twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
How, we have a, we have somebody that's shown up in ten days?
Only if I issued an order.
No order, there's no violation?
The violation was stipulated with file.
Still need to file. Violation. Need to check on. The only thing that was part of the show pause now, where it's the, the order. Except for fourteen, but, you know, okay, I don't know, I just, you know.
Can we find out if somebody can help us?
I, I tried, he's, they, it's, they, he doesn't know what's wrong with it. He doesn't, he said it's never beeped before.
Under fourteen four A, the order requires a show pause, under fourteen four C, just, just grounds the violation.
Yeah, so I think if we're gonna process the violation, we just do the show pause. Or then we should be.
You didn't issue it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so we're not hearing this with the violation, we're hearing it as.
Yes, yeah, I apologize, I was just reading it, and I just thought, and I was confused, I didn't mean to.
There's no violation, no, it's, it's, point of order, it's the point.
Violation is not pulling a permit and doing a regular activity.
Yeah.
Right, but we're, we're not processing it as a violation, violation pending.
The agency may request that the individual appear at the next scheduled meeting.
So four, I think somebody, it looks like it's Tony Russo's there, Fear TV, and town of Fairfield co-hosts pops up on the screen. The last five or ten minutes, I'm not even sure what happened online, but we lost connection, we, we tried to reconnect, and I think we're back on, and we left off at number five, application for receipt number two, W P dash twenty-three dash O twenty-four, shipper fifty-three close on Hill Lane, master, particle three five six, wetlands mitigation pending to the regulated area, and that staff recommends tabling application pending legal notice and salt and review, that's where we left off, we'll pick up from here.
We have to make a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept, any second. Ted, seconds, okay, all in favor? Aye, okay. Number three, map amendment application, one Kenny Associates, nine nine five South Pine Creek Road, possesses map two three two parcel one hundred, request to amend town map F dash twenty to reflect map title wetlands, awaiting recommendation from town attorney.
I just had a couple of questions, okay, is this a map amendment, or is this, is, there's two, there's two separate applications or one?
Requesting two.
Well, you discussing the declaratory ruling that this is titled wetlands. Map has already been amended previously, but we amended it to show, reflect that a wetland, and you're asking us to confirm that you're, that Victoria is going for wetlands, uh, the title wetland on multiple properties?
Similar to that.
Oh, the, the map amendment, the, we don't need to. This, this owner just warrants an absolutely, as much.
My certainty about this being titled.
Make the public record as clear and accurate as possible, so when you voted last summer, which I fully understand the condition that you put up, that for the most part, all the weapons in this lower area are title, however, there may be inland weapons on some property, so you should look into that, so to deal with that, and then when you look at the map, map shows a buffer in the property which could be considered a legal, so, and, and the map shows more wetlands on, so if you'd like to clear up the map for those.
So if you'd like to clear up the map for those, and then, and then the declaratory ruling to, for the record, that the agency probably notes that they don't have jurisdiction.
Right, but I think under the, the, I gave, um, Tim a copy of case law regarding this, case Darian, and I don't, uh, I think the proper procedure to do the declaratory ruling, then, that we should take care of her. That's, I mean, that's the case law, so it's, you know, there's, there's the Halle Khan decision out of here.
Um, no, I think.
I can get your copy, because it's pretty clear that the way that we should handle it, this is the, that was for, I think.
Are you, are you gonna get the town attorney?
We already did, I gave it to him today.
Oh, but did the town attorney give you direction?
He said that, that submitted it back.
Right, I didn't bring my phone, but I, I basically, I didn't agree with the, the, the declaratory ruling, going to that court application, like this off.
Okay.
As long as it's, you know, and I looked at your map, I didn't see any wetlands above the, what's it, five point A here?
Right. Oh, the. Five point, we go three, four, yeah.
I, that's, that's what I'm asking you.
No, we, I've only talked about three, but now you're saying that there's a, a, something from the town attorney, I didn't see that, so.
I'm just trying, trying to figure out procedure is the best way to do this, because there is case law regarding this.
Okay, if that is the case, then, uh, I could, if that's what the town attorney said, then we can ask the applicant to withdraw number three, and we'll move forward on number four, but I, I haven't seen anything that says that, so I, I don't. In any, is it gonna get delayed a month either way?
We're starting on tonight for completeness, not here, we're not, we don't have any, it's not an action I can.
Right, and not being an attorney, uh.
Well, it was table, we can discuss it, I just wanna make sure we're doing it right way.
A public hearing for next month, or?
I think the floor, the floor, if there are any, we don't need a public.
Yeah, here, no public hearing.
Yeah, we just have to, yeah.
Uh, can we, in case of a map amendment still makes sense, then we.
I think whatever our attorney says, we will go.
You might wanna talk to Jim. Right, like the property owner attorney, what you want to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Let's just continue, though, but, if there's a point that you, uh, feel that it's better to withdraw the map amendment application? You can do so. If, if it's between the, the attorneys for your client and the town's attorney, that says only the declaratory ruling because of this case is the proper procedure, then you can do that, okay? If it is a map amendment, that, why a public hearing? Can you, can we schedule that now and then just book plug it, if, just so we don't wait and have a problem?
Yeah, I just want it to be right, right, to each other.
He's associated, so, uh, the department of old, all the, uh, financials.
We held the check so far, because we didn't know if it was.
It's not, we're gonna get back to the attorney, we won't anyway.
Right, I just love to be able to, if, next one, one way or the others. I don't think, it should be, because it, it should be an order, there.
Do you wanna set up a, set it up as a public hearing now for next month?
Yes.
All right, and then, do that, and then if it's at the last minute, it's just abandon or withdraw on this one?
Right, this is, so you, okay, there were, you have multiple parcels, right?
Because of, you wanted to, um, if there had been inland weapons on the adjacent parcels, uh, your regulated reviewer fifty feet wide, so for the record, we were saying, but we had conclusions that there were no weapons on, not only on the particular parcel, but within fifty feet.
Also, you're just submitting those for the record?
So that when you make your determination, that it's a complete record, there's no weapons on the site or within fifty feet, so there's no reviewer.
Okay, so you're only asking us to act on one parcel and the other to, to, to.
However, um, ask for the legal advice on that.
I think, yeah, if you're gonna ask, you wouldn't, this action wouldn't affect those parcels from being included, you'd have to include it in, you know, in your application.
Which we did.
I think you'd be the property owners, um, consent for that, I think. I think too, the, I think if the cost is per parcel.
My understanding with a map amendment, uh, it's similar to what you, did you map amend it last year, that it's a change of the regulations section, and you didn't need permission from the property owners to amend your terms, so anyone can amend, or request to amend.
An action is a parcel, since individual parcels, if you're asking a lot of.
Yes, we, and we submitted it, so if we end up withdrawing on a map amendment, then.
We can't, I, I, you can't act on somebody's parcel, but, you know, you don't have any right to act on. You do not, you didn't give us permission, it's not part of an application.
But you, but what happened last year when you came to your map?
You tried to, it globally, the entire professional order wedding, I don't know.
Is, is that? I've seen a distinction, the difference.
I think one is, you know, more statutory, and, and you're asking us to make actions that findings on other individual parcels, well, about that occasionally. I guess you have to talk to the town attorney.
Yeah, well, that's, that'd be a totally, totally different notice requirements for town-wide map amendment versus other property.
I think there's different parts for map amendment, or parcel, you don't know.
Well, I don't know, I'll, we'll check with the attorney with the one.
Just leave it with your counsel and the attorney's counsel.
Sure, that we can say, no trouble here, anything, if we don't need it, we don't.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
It's an interesting property, is, is objective, it's just a little clearer.
You honestly wanna have any, um, the IWA jurisdiction of that?
It's not there, just think about it.
It's, I guess it's agency where you like the property.
Uh, he owns it, and I think it's just, uh.
Somebody's the one, the one that had the bar in the back?
There had been something.
Something.
Mediation.
We're back. I don't know, yeah.
This parcel does have a conservation easement, March restoration easement on it too, so you guys will still have jurisdiction as conservation.
On the conservation.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to, uh, six applications for discussion, number one, WP dash twenty-two dash two nine three Dow, one thirty-seven Windang Road, map one forty-five, parcel seventy, correct, corrective action, we plant stream bank with native plantings, activity within regulated area, last thing for public hearing, our decision is March tenth, twenty twenty-three, I'll provide a twenty-six day extension. Fifth, further thirty-nine day time extension is possible until May fourth, eighth, November third, last rate, the legal requires no third, twenty twenty-three, uh, fee waiver, reconsideration, uh, requested, and staff recommends approval, propose land and plan instead of. Michelle's here?
Yes.
No, there you are, hello. And you're fine.
So first, I would like to express my gratitude for everything during January third, um, there too, um, price, um, condition. Um, so the reason back here that I extremely helped us. Anyway, so when I think that backyard project was not, after completing, which process, I'm moving into this, uh, the change three years ago, um, at that point, I definitely, I, I, oh, those are my savings, um, so, anyway, then, this backyard situation, that was an honest mistake, I still don't understand, hopefully not. So, anyway, I have shown this, and we can, we can take care of the situation, um, I had accomplished some new job, started a very nice day of the first meeting, even in the next few days, so to make that happen, I even had to pay extra to a contractor, because he, I, I told him, I, I, I scheduled everything, had, we get back the next second day, so I can get along with him, he said, whatever, please, I. I don't have anything to finish, anyway, so, um, so I have spent a few thousand unexpected expense, just for the clean effort in this background. Um, this is untabled, but what I'm dealing with, my single mother, what I've shared with you, I don't even share with my neighbor.
If you don't wanna share, this is a recorded thing, everybody would know.
You don't have to share.
You don't have to share, it's okay.
Don't share this.
I mean, I think.
Um, it's, it's the letter saying, yeah, we're okay.
Yeah, you don't have to share, right, we understand your situation.
Yes.
I am.
Okay.
So, every, but, people, thousand dollars, just. Trying, um, so I'm not saying, have you this waiting for this hour, or how about this?
It's, you know, planting plan was limited and all that, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Um, my discussions with, we say I was, uh, plus they're given the financial constraints and, um, for current, uh, situation, um, that, uh, correctly, for long, but agree that if, if she was able to, uh, have the agency reconsider the, the remaining fee of a thousand, um, she, uh, that she would, uh, afford her the finances to be able to complete the planting plan faster, um, and.
Can I make a motion to waive the?
Anybody second me?
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor?
All right, yeah. I put that forward.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay.
The sixty, the sixty dollar state food books, we'll still need to get paid.
Okay.
That's the only thing, we, we're not allowed to wait.
So then, you have to pay sixty dollars.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, good day, I, I.
Well. Yeah.
No, no, that'll be fine.
Sure, it's all good, all right, thank you. We are. Seven, legal enforcement action number one, show cause hearings, Denise Norwood, one twenty, Winkman Lane, South Port, map, uh, four six parcel five C, plenty of wetlands mitigation and official materials on the wetland, referred to town attorney, so that's the, they're holding on.
So they're, they did send, uh, Alina Thomas Norwood and, uh, attorney, uh, Jackson, um, what was it? Uh, Monday?
Okay.
Uh, the, it's going unanswered.
I think it's someone in March telling that possibly new day.
Okay. So, you know, one suggestion, recommendation, thought, um, you know, our, our, our regulations allow for, um, separate violations, if the, if the violation continues, that's correct, right, you can basically do it a day. She's continuing to, um, maintain and mow any of our regulated areas without our permission, I think we should, we should separate violations, provisional violations, to get up on this one.
I think that's fair enough.
It's certainly not responsive, but I think it's time to turn up.
I think it's fair to the stone, it's probably not. Was the reason, say, her desire to have it remain the way it was?
Well, it, it, it's like, every day she gets, or every week she gets another violation, then, you know, the cost, uh, exposure. Did we done that, did we do that on the, the, the application on Reading Road, you know, that got no, um, no, uh.
Oh, the, um.
Process. Yeah, you know, the one that was drawn to me?
The Danardo one?
Yeah, Danardo.
Yeah, that was before me, so I don't know.
I think that's.
Oh, that wasn't that.
But I think this is kind of a similar situation, where it's going, and I think that, you know.
Who told us that, Sarah?
No. Uh, that would be my recommendation, I'll get to that, maybe talk to the town attorney about, you know, what, Darian, if she's continuing to maintain regulated areas, and it's supposed to be naturalized, it's an illegal violation every time she's.
I'll talk to Jim tomorrow. Number two, continued against Cynthia O'Malley, forty-seven corrective lane, map twelve, parcel thirteen, certain filling, grading, landscaping on map, wetland, and regulated area without a permit, and that leads back to the, for, and so that's just moving up, okay. Number three, show cause hearing, Juan Velez, eight one six Sturgis, uh, road map, one seven seven, part, part one seventy A, left with land clearing and true Google without permits. But, yeah, please come up and.
We're here for the tempers, so.
Yep.
So, uh, show cause hearing tonight is, uh, based on the order I issued, uh, in that order, it was to address a, uh, I believe it was May twenty-one, um, notice of violation that was, uh, extended with Sarah and SLR prior to, uh, taking over, um, so, basically, the order was, address the violation that's gone on, um, you know, un, unaddressed, that involved, uh, the, the tree clearing on the, uh, the side of, um, Mr. Velez's house, um, since that, uh, order went out, and we were scheduled one of the last meetings to this, um, I met with Mr. Velez on the property, we walked the property, uh, discussed some things, um, he has done planting, um, and, and I think to this point, at this point, um, let him speak, but I think the main thing is to get the plants in the ground, and, and move on. Um, he's gonna be doing, has some plans for this parcel, um, and we could, you know, we'd deal with permits moving forward, so, Mr. Velez, who's willing to work, we'll ask him to address these, um, just, uh, representative wise, while he's here, and go.
Thank you. Uh, Velez, how are you?
Mr. Serigal, medical.
Oh, Terry Russo, Mr. President, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Okay, wait, we got him, I think.
Well, he's gotta unmute, I requested him to unmute, now he has to just unmute himself, there we go.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Oh, here we go, yes.
All right, great, uh, Chair Commissioners, uh, good to be here before you tonight, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC, offices at, uh, ten Sasko Hill Road, uh, in Fairfield, uh, Tim kind of summed it up nicely, but, uh, yeah, this, this began back in, um, twenty twenty-one, uh, I actually was there for a site meeting, I think it was, it was me, uh, Megan Raymond from SLR, Sarah was there, and I think Bill Hurley was there for, for a part of the time, along with, with my client, and we went and, and looked at the, at the site, um, there, there were a couple of things going on, because there was also an issue at the time with, um, uh, some water that was coming in from one of the nurseries, um, there was a lot of water that was coming in, um, so we went, and that was, I think, the reason Bill was there, uh, Bill Hurley was there, to kind of look at that and see, um, what was going on, but, uh, there's a, and, and I don't know if Mr. Velez has that plan up, um, I can, I can actually share it on my screen too, uh, if you'd allow me the ability, but, uh, to show that there's, there was a swale that, um, had been filled in for, I, I don't know how long, but it, it was full of debris, and, um, that runs along the side of the property, and then exits out the back, um, out onto the town property, and, and it had filled in, and so we looked at that, and, and seeing where the water was going, because that was all clogged, and, uh, I mean, I, I have a tough time remembering what happened last week, but I, 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 so this was, you know, obviously a couple of years ago, but the thing we had talked about was that that swale, cleaning that swale out, uh, that was, had already existed, but had just filled up, and then, um, putting plantings in. And, so, my client at the time was also considering, and, and had plans to build a house there, and so the thought was to get a plan together for the house, but then also the remediation, and, uh, you know, that took some time, plus I know there was some, you know, changes at the town, uh, level, and so, um, you know, and Tim eventually came on, and so it, it kind of, um, was lost a bit, but now, um, you know, and I talked to Tim today about this, you know, my client still has this intention to go for an approval for a dwelling, but, you know, in talking to Tim, it seems like the best thing to do is just handle the violation and get that resolved at this time, and then, you know, my client can always come back for, uh, for, for the dwelling, and, um, so. And so we have been talking with, and I think my client has a plan there that shows where a house would go. But I think again, what we do is focus on, you know, that swale that's there and putting plantings around and adding some more plantings than the ones that already exist there. And so that's what we're intending to do.
We just asking back both uphold the show cause, make a motion that we, and you're okay with that, right? You're not contesting it, make a motion to uphold the show cause.
Second, also, Jerry, second, all in favor? All right. Have at it, let us know what's gonna happen and, you know, Tim and, and, you know, that'd be great. Plan, plan the whole thing, and that'd be very helpful.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
In order for me to accomplish the potential on the property, you know, since I received the order from you guys, you know, my mistake, apologize for my behavior. I don't trust you over there. Even the, the, the three that I cut, still there, Timothy was present on the property. So, oh, I kindly asked you, like, if you please allow me to move the order. Because he's on the way.
Oh, I have no doubts about that. He was ready to do it the next day, and I said, just hold off till we have this hearing.
Well, I've been in heart of bridge.
I haven't seen it. Is it, would it be something that will affect it even more? Or you're okay with, it's gonna just remove it?
Yeah, I think removing it and finishing the planting would result in violation.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, because I know this has been going on for a couple of years, but Mr. Velez was very responsive when it first happened. And it was just everything that was going on with staff that just kind of fell through the cracks. So this wasn't a matter of him really delaying it.
I'm not taking it that way. Not all the private issues, too, that shouldn't be taken that way. There was, some members, maybe more here, there was some upheaval was, who was here, who wasn't here.
Yeah.
Who was let go. So that is, that is.
But at the first step, he was calling, he did the site meeting, he was very.
Okay, take it from there, based on. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Attorney Russo.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Number four. It's appeal of WP-22-258, Turf Housing Corporation, ninety High Street, map seventy seven, apartment thirty forty, attorney unit assistant, multifamily affordable housing development. It's in a regulated area of the Supreme Court. It's informational. We all know that they've been appealed. So there's much more to say about it now. It'll take its course and we'll get more information as that moves forward. Okay? Eight, map amendment. Map amendment?
No, that's.
Just a, okay. Okay, that's if we were to do the other thing. Okay, I got you. Ten staff reports, reports from the conservation department. CWC permanent application received sixteen. Notice of violation issued one, bond release seven. Want to talk about any of it?
No. Just informative, Sarah, with test in the last few weeks, permits are. Fine. Activities increasing.
It's been a week.
You have that, so I'm on it.
Time frame to submit stuff to you, right?
Yeah, that is in the regs. Okay, so. Putting that, so. Okay, good. That would be helpful to us as we're processing paperwork.
Very good. Other discussion regarding a paperless feature for the commission?
So, far as I'm concerned, I'm a very hands-on paper guy. I take all the plans, I take my red pen, so I mark it all up. So I'd really like to have a paper copy of every application. Maybe it'd be important. I don't think we need to get whatever. How many copies do we get?
Seventeen.
I don't think we need seventeen.
This is a discussion for you guys.
Yeah. But I personally, and I don't know how anybody else feels, but I, you know, I use my scale, I sketch. Okay, and I, I can't do that on a screen. So I would want a favor, but I think we should be on a lots of papers.
Yeah, I would, I think we're killing a lot of trees with the stuff that we're putting out there. And a lot could be used electronically. I don't need the same review level that you have. I'd be perfectly happy looking at everything. It's means a lot less recycling.
Yeah.
I think I can cope with it. I mean, I think I know J, even though I don't. Clearly, it doesn't mean the same thing. Tim means it does, because I don't know what I'm looking at. I like to see it where I can, the scale, looking at it on the screen is difficult.
Yeah, I find it, like, and when I try to print something out, it's very difficult to read when you try to print it out on a home computer, you know what I mean? Like, because the scale is so much small, you're sma, you know, pushing it everything down.
How many copies do you need for your office, three? You go to different departments?
Yeah. So if you want for the file, we get one of those, someone's documenting, engineering, and the other store.
They need, they want, they want a continual paper copy?
It depends, well, because now everything is submitted through the online permitting program. So they may be able to.
You have to print them out yourself now, or you make the applicants maybe?
No, the applicants.
I think we could do, I mean, I would be happy for a suggestion of how many you think we need. But, you know, probably be under, I think, six or seven or something.
So an alternative thought is just to discuss some kind of archival process where after we've gone through the process of reviewing something, can we collect all this in one place and have it recycled?
I recycle all my stuff.
You just told me you don't have a driver's license, like that? Some have a printer, a printer.
So how much information is, so it can all be recycled.
I have a pile of separate department books, right?
Yeah. Our department, no.
I mean, you would have access to. Wouldn't have access to this stuff.
By the water could be.
Well, it doesn't work.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
We know how much?
How few thousand?
The large format, once larger.
Yeah, it's about a few thousand dollars. They're like five.
So maybe, maybe it's something where we can, everything gets submitted electronically, but for any commissioners who might want it, you can request a printout.
Yeah, no, I think you should automatically, you need a hard copy for your office anyways, right? You don't, you're not accepting all.
I do right now, yeah. So I think we make that printed.
Like seven hard copies?
Because I was, I was gonna say, also, some of these applications, I don't, we don't need to.
Yeah, but now, and that is also taking the time.
Right, and then you're gonna have to print it on time to make, I think that's a little fair to make that, you know.
There's an expensive work. Mail and drive them around.
Right.
You know, it takes four days to get to you guys in town.
But handling them, collating them, that's all.
Email, the road box is printed, I could just print them out.
Uh, that's not, you can't print it, it's a form. I mean, I have one at my office, but I'm not gonna print out every, it takes an hour. So, you know, I would think that there's, you know, there's still a need for paper copies. I just think we don't need seventeen copies.
It's also in our, in our regs, so we might, I think we have this discussion, might wanna finish that as a. Morphs table right now, it says seventeen.
Yeah, so, I mean, seventeen, you know, and I know I go to all these towns. At the meeting, they take all the things and throw it in the garbage. You know, like, no one, very few people think about trying, but I, I value the paper copies. And it's, can't, I can't say like, don't give me this one, don't give me that one. It's, you know, it's like, see, I don't really know.
When you're printing, you have to print them out for everybody, which people will request.
Yeah, I think they print them out, seventeen copies for our regs, and then give us a giant box.
I don't think that we should start printing it ourselves. I think that that's, I think that would be, because then I think that would be opening a can of worms of, then they send like at the last minute, oh, we made a change, and then they'd be scrapped. You know what I mean? Like, I think that we should keep that on the applicant.
Don't have any room for it.
Care about it. But you could, I don't mind picking them up. You could put them in a mailbox at the town hall, and I can pick them up. Say you drive it down the town hall, I drive by there every day. That's more convenient.
I don't mind picking them up either.
I know, I need to do that for another town in New York.
I'm happy to view all of this electronically, right?
So.
Locked that way, stuff one, a lot of it gets uploaded. So we get enough. Differ to those with experience.
It changes the regulation to say like, contact the agency for number of. It's just so.
Probably, we could put in, no, we could put in like a, you know, no less than, or.
Yeah, maybe it's about more than. Maybe we don't need seventeen, but at least seven.
Yeah. The number that we need in January with like one or two actually.
Whatever the commissioners want, part of the individual, we could just.
But I've been here with Rick, next to me, and he and I are sharing.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, if you go to all electronic, you're not gonna have anything. You're gonna have to bring your laptop and then.
You have some paper and some electronic based on preferences.
If we put it in the regs and, you know, all you guys.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Retire and.
We can always redo it, you know. It could be, I don't think, it can be a guideline rather than a regulation, a number.
Yes.
Yeah.
My wife comes up and says, aren't you guys supposed to be saving the trees?
Because, I mean, regulation, like, if you just put paper copies submitted to the department and then that became, say, well, how many do you need? And that's a change over time, we could say.
I think that's, I think that's elegant.
Preference. I don't want anything, nobody prefer.
I don't want.
Right now, it's just too, you know.
Yeah.
Jane, Peter.
I'm with you, like.
I've spent a lot of time with all the way.
Yeah, I mean, I, electronic, certainly couldn't be looking at anything. We change it.
Right? We work on it.
Yeah, we got a lot of IT to work on.
There's plenty of cloud vendors that want to help you.
Before you adjourn, I just wanted to circle back to the twenty seven seventeen North Street. You closed the public hearing, but there was no discussion. Are you gonna vote on that as a?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask now.
Oh, great, I just didn't want.
You guys have any issues with it? I don't know.
Oh, but there's a couple of things, and Sarah and I talked a little bit. When we do these applications, I guess they do findings for some of them, but I think all of our applications have findings in the file. And I don't know if you've ever seen the findings that the staff got, they email that everybody's testified. I think it's important, it goes through section six point two of our regulations and it outlines how the application conforms to our regulations. So it's an important part of the thing. So we can do that for this one also. But I think you have done some of the public hearings. I know we didn't do it for nine eighty High Street, but I think it was a little bit helpful.
My only, yeah, I just. For purposes of record or any appeal, I think it's only to denial that it can be fully laid out.
You can appeal it either way, you know.
For purposes of, that, and for appeal on a denial that has to be laid out. On anything that we approve, then it's up to somebody who wants to, somebody like a street neighbor or something like that.
Right, but then if we have, we have a record of why to be approved or disapproved it, it becomes a lot easier to defend the application. I recommend it either way. I think it's customer, you do that now for your CRC, right? Or they already do it, so.
Yeah.
So anyways, but anyways, I'm making motions to approve with the two conditions that we discovered. The, don't kill all animals, so that, regarding why this is feasible, this is the best feasible.
Second? Second, all in favor? All right, okay. We good? And anything else? Sarah, also, anything else?
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
I'm gonna have to call my wife, so quick.
Yay.